Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Maryville Town Council meeting for today, Tuesday, August 27th, at 6:30 PM. Please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for our invocation.
Let us pray. Father, we ask that you would receive our thanks tonight for this great town. Though not perfect, we know that we are blessed, and we thank you for all of those blessings. We thank you, God, first of all, for our first responders, the men and women that put their lives on the line every day to keep and protect us. Lord, rescue us when we are in need, and so we thank you for them and ask for their protection, a hedge of protection that might rest upon them. We thank you for the men and the women that have taken up the mantle to govern us. We ask that you would bless them and keep them. Give them wisdom, we pray, Lord. Most of all, we ask that your will would be done, God, that we would have great protection, blessing, and favor fall on this great town. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Mr. January, as our clerk, would you mind taking the roll call?
Yes, Mr. President. Vice President Neal.
Here.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Present.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Present.
Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Present.
Councilman Pettit.
Here.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Present.
President Bella.
Here.
Seven in favor. Present.
All present, thank you. Moving on tonight to petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations. Tonight, we're honored to have the Maryville firefighters here to talk about them with their local 5489 union incorporation. So I can ask the union representatives to approach the podium, and you have the floor. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. We want to thank you for the opportunity to be up here to speak in front of you tonight. Tonight, we are proud to announce that we have decided to come together as members of the Maryfire Department to become, to join the International Association of Firefighters and to also join the Professional Firefighters Union of Indiana. This decision reflects the commitment to enhancing the safety and well-being of not only our firefighters, but to ensuring we can provide the greatest level of service to our community here in Maryville. Our membership in this union strengthens our voice and allows us to better advocate for the resources and support needed to protect the residents of Maryville effectively. The IFF and the Professional Firefighters Union have a long history of standing up for the rights of firefighters, and we're excited to be part of this legacy. Tonight, we are honored to have District One Vice President John Parkhouse here with us tonight to formally present our charter. John has been a strong advocate for firefighters, not only across the state, but for this region specifically, and we're also grateful for his leadership and support during this process. Finally, again, we want to thank you, all the members who've come out here tonight, as well as the members from the surrounding departments. We appreciate everyone being here. This presence, your presence means a great deal to us as we take the significant step forward. Again, thank you for the town council for your ongoing support of the department and for giving us time for you to be here tonight. John?
Good evening, council, community. Thank you for allowing us a few minutes here to come into the meeting. Usually, when you see a contingency of public safety at a town council meeting, it goes one of two ways, really good or really bad. So this is a really good celebration tonight. This is great. I want to give a little feedback. Again, my name is John Parkhouse. I am a district vice president with the Professional Firefighters Union of Indiana. We represent over 8,500 firefighters in the state. We also make up part of the International Association of Firefighters across the United States and Canada, which helps represent over 326,000 active and retired members. So, you know, this isn't, this area is obviously a hotbed of the trades and the unions. We are a public sector union, so we don't necessarily have as many of the rights as the privates. We still, you know, are looking for, you know, a safe work environment, a decent salary, and a moderate retirement. Some, how this came to be, the IFF offers a lot of programs out there for departments, from 10 members to 10,000 members. One of the things that they did, there's a huge mental health initiative going on right now with firefighters and post-trauma, you know, post-traumatic stress. The Maryville Fire Department has somebody that's very passionate with that program. The International Association of Firefighters has a, a very good program that comes out and trains the trainer, puts on a two-day training that is for IFF affiliates, which at the time, Maryville was not. But the importance of it, you know, just showed that, hey, we, we can cross those lines. Let's welcome them in. Let's get these people trained. They're firefighters, you know, at the end of the day, just like, you know, the organized fire departments are. That training was really successful. There were some future conversations with their chief, who's been very supportive over this, and that's beyond important. The, the labor management relationship, being as positive as it is, can only, you know, the sky's the limit with this. And for them to have a good working relationship, they knew the time was now to come together. That's great. They've already been engaged with the IFF as far as requesting a GIS study, which obviously statistics are a big driving factor these days for expansion, call volume, response times, and stuff like that. So they've already hit the ground running, utilizing the services provided from the IFF. Again, thank you to the fellow brothers, sisters that are in the room. I see Sherriville and Gary represented here. That's what this is. This is a brotherhood, a sisterhood, where we come together. We have each other's backs when we have a call for action. We're there for one another, and, and we, we understand the perils and go through all this and appreciate it. So I'm here tonight to present a charter. This is on behalf of President Ed Kelly and the Executive Board of the International Association of Firefighters, presenting the Maryville Professional Firefighters, Local 5489. And actually, they're not even the new kid on the block anymore. There is a, another new local up here just outside of Elkhart that has 5490, so they're not even, they're not even the rookies anymore. So this is a charter. Hopefully, they will display it proudly in their fire station somewhere. It has all the original founding members, their names attached to it, and again, signed by President Ed Kelly with the International Association of Firefighters. So, President. I hope they produce positive results out of this. I'm sure they will, and they've got plenty of resources on the state and federal level if they need them. So thank you for your time, council, appreciate it, and community, thank you for your continued support of public safety and keep these guys and gals going out there. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Griffin, moving on this evening to the Employee of the Month for August.
Mr. President, thank you. Mr. Clerk Treasurer, will you join me, please?
I didn't know I could be the Employee of the Month.
I'm afraid it's one of yours. But maybe someday. I really have loved this particular element of the structure of personnel relations in Maryville that the council has authorized, and for many years, apparently, has been doing this Employee of the Month. For my prior bill, it wasn't something we did, but I really like it. It gives us a chance to put a highlight on an important part of our town, the Office of the Clerk Treasurer, a critical part of our town, as a matter of fact, a critical, a critical part of the many arms we need to do the good work for the people of Maryville. But I was trying to think of how I would frame this. I'm going to actually ask you to read this when we ask your employee to come up. Woodrow Wilson, when he was President of the United States, he had gotten the Declaration of War Against Germany, and he was readying the AEF, the American Expeditionary Force, under Blackjack Persin. And there was a lot of discussions about how the country was going to have to sacrifice. And he talked about the kinds of sacrifice that he thought was going on. He says there'd be a thousand forms of it. There's the obvious sacrifice of the military people, but there's the sacrifice of the men who couldn't go because of health reasons, who will be in our factories helping to develop the armors and the ammunition and the necessities to support the war after. And there'll be the women. Now, remember the time, this is the early 1917, 1916. Talked about that they would be at home, and he would be preparing the kinds of things that would support the troops, in many cases, as volunteers, perhaps at the Red Cross or other ways. And he talked about the women who would be not highlighted, but doing the quiet kinds of things that they always did to support things in ways that they always did, maybe through prayer. And it made me think of Jewel Williams, who we're going to recognize as the Employee of the Month from the Office of the Clerk Treasurer. She serves effectively and quietly every week and every month. She regularly prepares, among her many duties, an accurate accounts payable voucher docket that is brought to the council for them to take steps on. She does it quietly, not a lot of aplomb. It's a quiet email that she circulates among the officers of the unit. Hatred's been checked by the Clerk Treasurer, and she does very good work. So I'm very proud that this quiet little voice, that's one of the thousand ways in which we elevate the work of Maryville to serve our public, is recognized. Ms. Williams, will you join us, please? Mr. January is Clerk Treasurer, and her boss, I'd like you to read the citation, please.
What's not on here, Jewel is truly a jewel. She's a gem. All right, certificate of recognition, Employee of the Month, August 2024. This certificate is proudly presented to Jewel Williams. Jewel has proven herself to be a great team player, and for the last five months, she has shown great leadership skills. She has remained positive while taking on several new responsibilities. Awarded this 27th day of August 2024.
Congratulations, Mr. Clerk. Thank you. Hi there. How are you? Mr. President, members of the council, thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. January.
You're welcome, sir. Moving on tonight to public hearings, a call on our town attorney, Joe Svetnov, for ordinance 24-29. It is a additional appropriation to the casino fund in the 300 series, including services and charges. The amount is $45,000. Joe?
We've reviewed the proofs of publication. They are in order, and at this time, the public hearing is ready to proceed.
Is there any public comment on this ordinance 24-29, which will be taken up later tonight in the agenda? The records show no public hearing. Moving on to the second item tonight, ordinance 24-30 is an additional appropriation to the fire protection territory, and it includes overtime at $150,000 and insurance at $115,000. Mr. Svetnov.
Again, we've reviewed the proofs of publication. They are in order, and at this time, we're, we're in line to proceed with the public hearing.
Is there any public comment on this fire territory, ordinance 24-30? Seeing none, we will move on to ordinance 24-34. It's an additional appropriation to the police continuing education fund. The amount is $60,000 for continuing education and overtime. Joe?
Again, we've reviewed the proofs of publication. They are in order, and at this time, the public hearing is, is adequate to proceed.
Is there any public comment on this particular ordinance 24-34? Seeing none, all three of these ordinances will be taken up, and item 13 on the agenda tonight under, under ordinances. Thank you. Moving on tonight to motions on the table. We do have an item to remove from the table. It is the ARSH group fee structure impact fee proposal.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to take the matter of the ARSH group agreement from the table.
Motion by Mr. Pettit.
Second.
Second, the chair recognizes Ms. Hardaway to remove from the table the ARSH group fee structure impact. Fees, excuse me.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve, pass and approve the agreement and authorize the proper officer to execute the signature.
We have a motion from Mr. Pettit to accept the proposal. Mr. Pettit, do you want to read into the record those amounts? If you have those in front of you.
Uh, I do.
You have them here.
Very last page, in the columns.
Yes.
I believe it was 46,500, Michael?
45,600.
45,600.
Yes, that's in total, so the parks plan will be 22,700, and the impact fee will be 22,900.
Yes.
Or the total you mentioned of 45,600.
Yes.
Is there a second on Mr. Pettit's motion to approve?
Second.
Chair recognizes Mrs. Yuzlak for a second. Thank you. Open for discussion.
I do have a question. I thought the name was familiar, because I've seen this name on Taff Street. And so it's great that this is a local business, but I also noticed when I looked up the business that they performed this service periodically, and I want to know what has changed since 2020, the last time they did a report like this. I know we've had the community center add it, but what significantly has, and what significantly has changed, and have we reviewed that to make sure there's no duplication involved?
Mr. Griffin, would you please do, address?
With your permission, Mr. President, thank you. Thank you, Mr. January, for the question. Remember, this is twofold. Part of it's the park master plan, and it's expiring this year, and as you know, we need to have that done for a term of at least five years so that we can be using that plan to guide the planning for the office, but more importantly, to be eligible for federally based funds from IDNR. In terms of the, the impact fee, I think it's longer than five years that it was done. It might have been 2020 they did it last. However, it is the Dean and Barbara White Center that is the most significant change. Mr. Ashami assures me, using the algorithm that is used to develop that fee, that all the fees will be considerably larger just in that period of time. Part of it's based on a formula that uses the cost of those kinds of services for catch-up, the value of all the land that we have in place, all the services that we have in place that are related to the parks. So it is very worthwhile. And as I shared with the council, and I thought with you, Mr. January, and if I didn't, please accept my apology, there, 5% of the cost for this part of that service may be paid for by the impact fee fund. So some of these fees, some of the costs of that portion of the work will be borne by the impact fees that are already in the course of collection. It's really essential that we get that in advance of the new development that's taking place, because largely what's been happening is, is that there's very, it's largely being paid for by commercial development or industrial development, in the rare case we do it. It's very little residential, which is to our advantage, and that money then can be used for the specific purposes that the impact fee is supposed to be used, which is developing existing parks, physical plant, playground equipment can be used for, and that kind of thing. So it's my understanding that the changes are significant enough that it's important to do this again.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, Mr. January, roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. President. All right. Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Motion is approved.
I thank the council.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Moving on tonight to the consent agenda, we have the Accounts Payable Register Voucher Approval for August 27th, the Accounts Payable Register Summary for ARP purchases for August 27th, the approval of town council meeting minutes of August 13th, the approval of the ARPA meeting minutes of April 4th, the approval of the ARP meeting minutes of May 1st, the approval of ARP meeting minutes of June 27th, the approval of the Personnel Policy and Employee Benefits Meeting Minutes for July 9th, and the approval of the ARP meeting minutes of July 17th.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Yuzlak.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Haynes Edwards. Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Moving on tonight to a presentation of declarations. Mr. January, would you please read the first one? It is the Assisted Living Week, which will be September 8th through the 14th.
The Assisted Living Week. Town of Maryville Declaration of the State of Indiana, September 8th, the Town, Town Council of Maryville designating the week of September 8th through 14th, 2024, as Assisted Living Week. Whereas residents of assisted living communities are active members of the larger community offering their knowledge, their life experiences, and involvement. Their past contributions continue to be a vital part of Indiana's rich history, and their ongoing participation deepens Maryville's identity. Whereas assisting living, living is a critical long-term care option for older adults and individuals with disabilities that fosters choice, dignity, and independence. Assisted living communities are committed to excellence, innovation, and the advancement of person-centered care. Whereas, whereas, in 1995, National Center for Assisted Living established National Assisted Living Week to honor the contributions of assisted living communities in providing long-term care to America's seniors and individuals with disabilities. Whereas this year's theme of National Assisted Living Week is inspiring generations, highlights the incredible care provided by essential caregivers, and celebrates residents and their families. Whereas, during this special week, assisted living communities across the country are encouraged to organize activities and events which celebrate the dedication of staff, the individuality, individuality of residents, and the deep connections formed in these settings. Whereas, the Town Council of Maryville, Indiana is committed to equity, diversity, and inclusion, and value all residents of Maryville, no matter where or in what type of housing in town, and value the great service that assisted living communities offer. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Town, Town Council of the Town of Maryville, Indiana does hereby declare the week of September 8th through the 14th, 2024, as Assisted Living Week, and call upon the citizens of Maryville to call a loved one, family member, or friend residing in any care setting, offer and offer a kind word, and spend time participating in various activities to unite those from all walks of life in need of our continuing love and support, and to learn more about how assisted living services benefit our wonderful community of Maryville.
Nicely done, Mr. January.
Thanks, sir.
Motion to approve?
Second.
You have a motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Yuzlak, to approve the declaration designating September 8th through the 14th as Assisted Living Week. As having family members who have been in assisted living, I can highly speak to the talent that's there and the care that these residents get, and we should be thanking them every, every month, not just once a month. Yeah, exactly.
Yes.
Any other comments from the council?
I had a chance to visit one of the assisted living facilities last week, and one of the ladies is turning 100 years old in about a month. The lady was so intellectually sharp, and she was ready to dance and have a good time. It was just incredible. And so I asked her what she was eating.
We should, Mr. President, we should find out who that individual is, because I also, last week, with Chaz's help, went over to Belvedere, and there was a 100-year-old resident that celebrated her birthday.
It may be the same person. She hasn't, or maybe it's, no, I don't know if they had two.
Their family was there, they had a cake, they had all the residents there. Rosie is a very sweet lady.
Very nice.
We also have another woman at HEPA. She will be 103.
Oh, wow.
In February. We already did a proclamation for her at the age of 100. But recognition is always.
Always. Yeah.
You might be the oldest resident in town, Marty.
Yeah.
I think so, and she is very alert, and she just tells me stories about the Depression, the presidents, and she makes sure she votes every election.
With no other comment, all in favor of this declaration signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. January will pass it along for signatures. I will, thank you. Moving on tonight to our second declaration, we have a designation of the week of September 15th to the 21st as Adult Literacy Week. Mr. January.
Yes, Mr. President. Town of Maryville Declaration of the State of Indiana. The Town Council of Maryville recognizes the week of September 15th through the 21st of 2024 as National Adult Education and Family Literacy Week. Whereas, more than 43 million Americans can't read or write at the most basic level, while 62.7 million lack basic math skills, as well as the credentials and skills necessary to succeed in post-secondary education. Whereas, every year, 1 in 3 young adults drops out of high school. Whereas, American Action Forum estimates that America is short in estimated 7.5 million private sector workers across all skill levels, and whereas, adult education programs contribute to solving these challenges by helping Americans move along the continuum in their educational journey to achieve basic skills and get prepared for career and college. Whereas, adult education programs in high schools and adult schools, communities, colleges, and community centers offer low-cost, high-value programs that upgrade the skill set of our citizens. Whereas, the Town Council of Maryville, Indiana celebrates Adult Education and Family Literacy Week as a proud participant in the National Educate and Elevate Campaign, which helps our citizens learn about all of their adult education options to attain their professional and personal goals. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Town Council of the Town of Maryville, Indiana does hereby declare the week of September 15th through the 21st of 2024 as Adult Literacy Week, and call upon the citizens of Maryville to observe, discuss, and educate others with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and other activities about the value and contributions that adult literacy provides to the betterment of our nation-state, and more specifically, our hometown of Maryville.
Good, thank you, Mr. January. Is there a motion on the floor for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Yuzlak, seconded by all of my fellow counselors to the left.
I'll take that one.
Chandler Felton. You guys. Questions or comments on the motion?
It's a whole question.
Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Mr. Griffin, I'll get with you, and when Linda returns, we'll get some copies of these sent to the appropriate entities who shared those with us. Moving on tonight to standing committee reports, Budget and Finance. Vice President Neal.
Thank you, President Bella. We are in budget season, so we've been meeting quite a bit, getting our budget prepared to get everything in and turned in on time. But I would like, Mr. Griffin, if you don't mind, to talk a little bit about the resident grant, because we did get that completed.
With your permission, Mr. President?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I appreciate the opportunity. The Vice President serves also as Chair of our American Recovery and Protection Act Fund Committee, and it is the place that is tasked with granting that money. Previously, we had a grant program that covered both residences and businesses, up to a certain limit of $5,000. It would be a 50-50 grant, and it would be for particular improvements that people needed that would be in consequence or related to the purposes of the Treasury guidance. Since the first time that money actually came out, the Treasury guidance has, have actually broadened what can be construed, as long as it's a lawful public purpose. So we now have the revised application process, and it is available. We're working with our content officer and our media officer, Mr. Riley, to get this out, and it has been revised. It is going to be strictly for residential purposes only. The grant can go up to $10,000, 50-50. The grant can go up to $10,000, 50-50 split for most residential improvement needs. You can even apply for this if you have been issued a citation that had to do with the condition of your home. You can apply for this grant to help you meet that condition. If you wish to participate in the grading scale that HUD publishes and is used by the Lake County Community Development Department for income need based on the number of residents in your home, if you qualify under that, we can actually do up to, instead of a 50-50 match, an 80-20 match, 80 being on the town from this fund. And we've added a category for two, if I'm not mistaken, one of which is for roofs. And that allows the project to go up to $20,000, half of which would be borne by the town at 10. And there's also now, hopefully, a measure that would allow you to deal with either backup devices that can help you if you've got a sump pump and you're subject to that, regardless of the sanitary district that is, or the sanitary utility that's serving your home. You can apply for that and that, I believe, can go up to $20,000 as well because those aren't inexpensive remedies. So you can actually apply for this grant and it can go up to 50% to assist you in making sure that it's unlikely that during a heavy rain, that any backup would come in because you'd have backflow prevention devices that could be supported by the costs of this with the proper contractor. And again, that also is subject to the sliding fee scale based on your income, which is the federal guidance on this. The federal guidance has not been improved, I want to say for 25 years or better. It's mighty low. But if you want to put yourself through that review, we'll happily allow for that. And if you qualify, it can give you more of us picking up some of that tab. If you'd like more information, you're welcome to call our office or you can call the Building and Planning Department, the Planning and Building Department, I always get that inverted. I apologize, Ms. Shine. And Ms. Shine or her staff can actually help you. The applications are available there and then we can get that available to you. I believe that they'll be online to be downloadable as well if you'd like them. And you may have questions after you get that. And we've, I believe that the ARPA Committee has allocated $250,000 to support the grants, but it is first come, first served, so it will do that until it runs out. And we hope it runs out. We would like to get those into the community to have those improvements realized. I think I've covered that adequately, Madam.
Thank you.
I thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Members of the Council, and Mr. Clerk Treasurer.
Thank you, both. Council Affairs tonight, Counselor Pettit.
Mr. President, we need to have a committee meeting. I'm trying to find a date with my, my co-members, Leona and Keisha. Leona, does Wednesday, the 4th of September work for you? Michael has several ordinances, the Fire Department has several ordinances that we need to have Joe and Ricardo. Can you do a noon on the 4th?
At noon.
Noon on the 4th here?
Yes.
Okay, Michael, will you mark that down? Joe, will you take care of that? And I think our fire chief stepped out, so I will have to get with Mr. Tillman and Mr. Yurga and get those ordinances so we can get those moving through. That's all I have.
Speaking of ordinances, can I ask about, update, Mr. Griffin, on the codification of past ordinances that we have approved? I know the chief is sitting at the edge of his seat.
Mr. President, Madam Vice President, Members of the Council, Mr. Clerk Treasurer. The Clerk Treasurer and I have shared frustration. We have this great codifier. We thought we'd worked through a lot of the problems. We even had the Clerk Treasurer's office cooperate with us to try to get the contract sent to them in the form of a purchase order to make the obligation very clear. But for reasons, it's your path of my understanding, they thought they would take up to four more weeks before they could upload those backlogged ordinances to the website. I haven't followed up to find out why. I counted to 10, so I didn't say anything that I would be ashamed of. And then I went and took the steps which were the old remedy. As you know, under the law, if we had that immediately in our code, 14 days later, every one of those things becomes full force. We're talking about penalty ordinances. So instead, we did it the old-fashioned way. Since it's going to take four weeks anyway, I took steps to get them advertised. They actually were advertised on the 23rd. So as of September 22nd, the chief can start enforcing, as can the Fire Department and Code Enforcement for that matter, under the terms of those new, those new penalties. And that actually gives us a date certain, but we will have to follow up and find out why it is that this is taking so long. I'm not really clear about that, but that's my, that's my report in response to your question.
Thank you.
I think that's pretty totally it, so.
Mr. Svetinoff, you concur?
I concur on everything. And if the codifier's taking that long, let's circumvent him and publish all ordinances ourselves.
Mine was me. We'll get them done at least.
Yep.
We can't enforce them unless they're.
And it doesn't.
We'll get them done and on the books, that's what we need.
It doesn't do us any good to pass ordinances if it doesn't give the chief teeth to and his officers to enforce it. We've wasted everyone's time, quite frankly.
Agreed. Anything else, Mr. Pettit?
That's all.
Moving on to the Street Department, Mrs. Yuzlak.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. Steve King has done a lot with the Street Department. They have still diligently been picking up the branches and they've been cleaning up the bike trails, which I know they finished. And they also, I think, were working on Maryville Road with sealing, is that correct, Steve?
Yeah, we're crack sealing, crack sealing on Maryville Road. Hopefully be done by end of day Thursday with that.
Thank you. And I also met with Steve at the Dean and Barbara White Center regarding different issues with the Street Department and the Park Department. I believe the Park Department was doing all the mowing of the parks. And I think Steve is willing to help him at this moment. Is that correct?
So we've been helping as Councilman Pettit notified me at the last council meeting that we were going to get involved with this project. We have been out, over the past two weeks, we've been out cleaning up the bike trails. Those are all done. We, we finished up Prusen Park today. There was a lot of downed trees, a lot of debris we had to pick up. We mowed everything. We did have to close the walking path around Prusen Park. In the back, there's a rubberized surface path and it's completely destroyed. It's buckled, it's got to be replaced. It's unsafe for the residents to walk on. So we took steps and closed that the other day. And we'll have to get together with Lisa or the committee, we're going to have to seek some, some bids to get that replaced. We haven't kind of, we haven't dove into it that deep yet, but we're getting there.
Thank you, Steve.
Mrs. Yuzlak, can I ask for an update on where we are with the cleanup of the, the park in Turkey Creek? That was in such bad shape. Do we ever get that cleaned up and repainted? Steffig Park, yes.
Oh, Steffig Park?
Yeah.
Yeah, we haven't made it over there yet. The trails are probably already getting them cleaned up as well as Prusen. We'll be over there tomorrow. We'll be over there tomorrow mowing, emptying garbage and evaluating what needs to be done. Mr. Neal's left us with a lot of graffiti cleaner that if there's graffiti out there, we can get cleaned up. I know we're missing a bench out there. I think a swing and a garbage can. We're going to have to get that stuff ordered as well, so we're, we're moving as quick as we can.
Okay.
To get it, get it straightened up.
Okay, I have one more issue. Regarding waste management in the apartment buildings on 73rd and Whitcomb. I had a few phone calls over the weekend. The garbage was dispersed all over the street and people driving by in their cars were complaining. So I'm sure waste management has picked it up by now. I have not been out there to check.
No, they're not going to pick it up. They won't stop the trucks.
But anyway.
It's a mess.
I think I told you about it, Steve, so I don't know. I think the Street Department's been out there too.
Yeah, it's.
But it is a shame. They're just throwing their garbage on the street, actually, to tell you the truth. Their cans are just filled to the top and there's garbage laying on the street. So I just don't know what else we could do about that issue.
Get a new waste taller.
What? A new waste taller?
Get a new waste taller.
Well, we'd have to take it.
That's, that's.
That's coming up.
Mr. King, did you request any additional personnel as far as head count for next year in the budget process?
I, I did for our department. I asked for two to three additional employees.
Okay.
I, I did. And at the committee, we talked about some additional employees for, to maintain the parks.
I was going to mention that in later. We, we talked about that last Thursday. Margie and I were there for the committee meeting and Steve was there. And again, I apologize for, for blindsiding you, Steve.
Mrs. Neal mentioned the budget and now's the time to.
Well, yeah, and he.
Budget for that if we can.
It's not only Public Works, but it's, it's a, it's a mowing crew. And it gets into, and some of these were personnel matters that we're still investigating as a committee. You know, Lisa's the interim assistant to be evaluated. And Mike Neal has now moved into temporarily, until this is all finalized with the Personnel Committee, the building manager of the Dean and Barbara White Community Center. Therefore, we need park maintenance, crew leader and support staff, which Steve, we're estimating is probably three folks. Honestly, Steve, I think feels this way, I know I do. The, the summer help, it's great, but it's not the solution because the grass grows when the kids go back to school or before they get here. And it's just, it was way too much to handle. So that's something we're going to have to evaluate, round it and look at the budget with Trista and, and figure out what needs to be done in, in the Parks Department. So that was part of my report later on. Mr. President, I have one item for, for Steve and, and Michael. If, Michael, if you could craft a letter and send it to the Maryville School Corporation. And Steve, I've had several complaints about not only student traffic, vehicular traffic, but bus traffic. So I would like a speed bump put on 67th Avenue between Pennsylvania and Connecticut. I constantly get calls from the folks on 67th about people speeding and it's not just cars, it's also school buses getting out of the bus barn. So Michael, if you could give them a heads up that there's a speed bump going to go on 67th, so somebody with a school bus doesn't hit that thing and go flying. But the residents want to see something done out there. And that's a perfect, I think, examples, Steve, of where we can put a speed bump.
So you want to, so you said 67th?
67th Avenue.
Between where?
Pennsylvania and Connecticut.
Is that one of the major roads that gets to the high school?
Yep.
We need to check with Chief Yurga then and make sure that's going to be okay because if it's.
Goes to the bus barn.
If it's a route that the fire truck takes often, we have to be cautious. So we need to make sure that.
Well, 68th Place is the main drag into, along with their entrance off of Broadway.
Chief Yurga's right here.
Chief, do you have a comment?
Come on up.
Come on up then.
I know you guys love the speed bumps when a truck goes over them and all the equipment goes bouncing around and the water splashes out of the pumpers.
Oh, goodness.
I don't mind the concept of the speed bumps, but I have a truck in, it just came back, it cost us $18,000 to put springs on the front. And this truck was from 2005, never had any issues. And then, I'm not saying it's the speed bumps' fault, I don't want anybody to think I'm against or promote speedy, I'm just telling you. And if they're on Main 3, like Madison Street, right?
Right.
That was a bad idea because.
Well, that's.
Because it slows us down big time, just like police.
When the boss asks for something, you put it in.
As far as 67th Avenue goes, if you're doing 67th, you might as well do 66 because it's a big square right there. And they're both entrances into the, into the bus barns. My vote is no, however, that's that.
Well, it's either that.
Thank you.
Folks or chief, you can put a squad there at Connecticut and 67th. And you know my policy, tickets, no warnings, even for a school bus driver. How that would look.
Well, because when we, when we put the, when we have these installed, we usually, you know, strategically place them because like Chief Yurga said, you know, the ones on 67th, so they're going to go around the block on 66 and just go. So.
Yeah.
That's how we'll.
Yeah, by what, by the old YN. Yep. Okay, that's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Chief, I tried, you know. Thank you, Mr. Pettit and Mrs. Yuzlak. Moving on tonight to Elections, Public Relations and Town Beautification, Vice President Neal.
Thank you, President Bellas. Just a very small report. We had our last meeting August 19th on Monday for the gateway signs. So we're now looking and waiting for the company to send back estimates on everything that we're getting submitted to them. So we're progressing with it very nicely.
And Mr. Pettit's aware we're going to be presenting him with an invoice for.
Yes.
Some gateway signs?
If he's not aware, he's aware now.
That money tree's blooming back there.
Very good.
That is the plan. And that's mine. That's all for the report.
Thank you. Environmental Affairs, Mr. Pettit.
I have nothing, Mr. President. I'll defer to Vice President Neal and Matt Lake later on in the agenda.
Personnel Policy and Employee Benefits, Counselor Hardaway.
So for Personnel Policy Committee, we are going to advertise for jobs for the community center. We'll have a few for the event side, well, one for the event side, a couple for site supervisor and front desk. And then we will continue our search for the parks director. Look for those to be posted next week, mid next week, since Monday is a holiday. And I will, can I continue to public safety because I'm done with that report?
Please proceed, absolutely.
Segue in.
Segue in. So for public safety, I will be calling a meeting with both Chief Yurga and Chief Nucis to discuss the plans for the simulation for the, what am I, what word am I looking for? Our simulation for disasters? Okay, all right. Simulation for disasters. And then any other concerns? I need to meet with them. So I will be putting that meeting, I will be reaching out to you guys to see what days work best and we will call a meeting. So please be on the lookout for that. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Economic Development, Mr. Pettit.
Yes, Mr. President. We had a RDC meeting before this and passed a resolution for the $6 million worth of paving in the seven wards. And there will be a companion resolution later on in the agenda for the council to act on. Mr. Swentz has come up from Indianapolis kindly to, to go through that with us. The other item, Mr. President, that I wanted to, to bring up, and I hope this is the appropriate way to do it, Joe. At the last council meeting of August 13th, 2024, there was an ordinance 2433, which was delayed for two weeks. This matter still requires further council action. This is for a proposed data center in Ward 6 on 101st Avenue. Leona and Margie and I saw this rezone request at the Plan Commission. It received a favorable recommendation. However, we have been, Angie Chilcot, Michael and I, and even Rick in his area, have had a lot of requests about these data centers, which prompted Rick to create the Citizen Advisory Committee, which I believe is meeting Monday, September 9th.
Correct.
At 5 o'clock to start going through and diving into some of these things. So the petitioner has asked again for another two-week delay until we can continue to research this. There's one on 101st Avenue in Ward 6. There's also one that we met with the potential developer in Amerplex for the 87 acres that they have. So as the committee gets together and gets information, we'll sift through all that. So at this time, Mr. President, I make a motion to continue and delay consideration of ordinance 24-33 to the meeting of the Town Council on September 10th, 2024.
Mr. Svetinoff, is that motion in order?
It is. I just add in the, the phrase defer.
Mr. Pettit?
I will change my motion to defer ordinance 2433 to the September 10th, 2024 council meeting. Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second that motion.
Ms. Chandler Felton. You're too talky, Marj.
What?
Motion on the floor to defer 24-33 until, what date was it, on the next council?
September 10th.
September.
9/10 meeting, okay. Thank you, guys. Questions or comments on the motion? I appreciate you doing that because it'll give us at least some time to look into it and get the committee going and maybe learn some more about these data centers.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I would love it if we could somehow encourage some of these data centers to move to the north side of town because when they come to the area, they bring a lot of IT infrastructure. And if we were able to get some fiber optic to the north side of town, it could probably spur some more economic development because we'll have all of the fiber optic cable to be competitive when it comes to businesses, people that are YouTube, doing different businesses out of their home. So that would be great. That's, I just wanted to mention that.
So what we've learned, Mr. January, is that they need to go where these large trunk lines are to provide enough power to support the data centers. Most of these too, they also need between 80 to 300 acres. And when you think of the north part of town, we don't have that kind of acreage there because the town's filled up there, pretty much, the north part of town. We'll certainly look at that, but if they can't get the power to it, it makes it cost prohibitive.
Okay. Power, okay.
Yep.
And it's really.[1782.81] And it's really-
It's not power that you would power a house or a neighborhood, it's these high wattage lines that they need to have.
And really, Rick, I think we found out that we can do the rezone as, as this, this ordinance is trying to do, but at the end of the day, NIPSCO is gonna be dictating-
Yeah.
If they can supply the power. There's a, each one of these has to submit a request to NIPSCO for a study, if NIPSCO can provide the power. Now, a lot of these have dropped off, Chesterton's dropped off, Burns Harbor's dropped off. Um, we were told by NIPSCO that they have approximately 40 requests in their 33 county service area, but these, these people come in and they don't take that extra step. These two that happen to be in Ward 6 are taking that extra step. They're willing to pay for these studies, which could cost them $500,000 to $1 million that they gotta pay NIPSCO, and NIPSCO's gotta come back and say, yeah, we can do that. Now, the one tonight we're talking about has got a diagonal power line going across the property at 193 megawatts, was that it, Rick?
Mm-hmm.
I think so, yeah. That goes by silos at Sanders Farm and then goes down into Crown Point and across Broadway at a diagonal. So it's kinda on NIPSCO's plate, more so than it is ours, but we wanna, we wanna be educated as to what we do with this.
Any other discussion on the motion? Roll call is needed, or is it just a voice vote, Joe?
Just a voice vote.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Sean.
Thank you.
You'll let them know what we did?
Yes, Mr. Anderson's in the back row.
Oh, hi, Richard, I didn't see you. Anything else under Economic-
That's all.
Moving on to Utility Liaison, Council Chandler Felton.
I just have a bit of a partial kinda contact. I've spoken with, um, Ms. Barber, and her schedule is rather full.
Yeah.
So, um, we're looking into a possible meeting, maybe via Zoom sometime, as soon as we can possibly get it together.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Thank you. Parks, Recreation, and the Dean and Barbara White Community Center, Mr. Pettit.
All right, Mr. President, we covered the maintenance with Steve and the bike trails and the Prusen Center, and we talked about the personnel requirements. We did have a committee meeting last Thursday night. Um, one of the items, um, is, uh, a martial arts self-defense course, um, that was approved by the committee. So at this time, I moved the instructor agreement and recreation fees for the martial arts self-defense course to be approved, and that is with, am I gonna say this wrong, Michael? Ben DeCato-
Let Michael say it.
Nip, Ninapo LLC?
Ninpo.
Yes.
Is that right?
That's pretty good, actually.
Pretty close.
I'm sorry for that.
No apologies necessary, that's pretty good, Council.
That is his LLC, his actual name is Joe Lawson.
Joe?
Joe Lawson.
Okay.
Would've been good to know that.
Yes.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Usek to approve the agreement with the name that Mr. Pettit provided.
Wow.
It's Joe.
Joe.
With Joe, yes, exactly. Questions or comments, anything to add, Mr. Griffin, this agreement?
Mr. President, thank you. Ms. Robertson and I, this is the first program that we're doing since we did an evaluation of the cost of the operation of the center. So some highlights about this are, is when we met with the instructor and what he was used to getting, we had to kind of find a middle way. So the fees are going to be, if, if approved by the council this evening, $85 for non-residents and 80 for residents. The course will run for four weeks, two hours a week, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, and we know what we needed to get. This is gonna be occupying a room in which our cost of operation is $2.72 per hour. So we were able to figure out exactly what we needed to charge and to meet the need of this, this instructor. So we will be monitoring to make sure that 13 people enroll in the class, he'll only take 20 as a maximum. At 13, we break even. And under the terms of this agreement, we'll have kind of a sharing after that, which actually nerds to our benefit more greatly than his. But we felt like that was one way to make up for him agreeing to work at $21 an hour, which is vastly below what he ordinarily gets. So that sharing after we meet our break-even point, what I'm proud of is that we worked on this together. This is based on a new, uh, calculation matrix that we had in place but never had a class to use it in. So we know if we get 13 members of this class, our costs have been met. And then everything under, over that is, uh, additional resources, not surplus, that we can put into programming and other things that we hope to do. So I hope that the council will, will favor this. Eventually, we'll have an ordinance that will cover this, and we'll actually have a booklet that you'll approve, uh, as the park authority with regard to fees and the like. But until that happens, especially with, uh, agreements like this, we'll be bringing them back to you through the committee process for your approval, your, your favor, hopefully, your review and your favor.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Mr. Fris.
Mr. Pettit, would you consider adding to your motion that we, to authorize the town manager and our interim Assistant Parks Director to sign the agreement with Joe Lawson?
I will amend the motion.
Mrs. Usek, your second stand?
Yes.
Very good. Any questions or comments?
I have a little question.
Leona?
Um, on that document on number three, in the first, in Article 2, it talks about, um, an assistant to be hired if the class size becomes too much. What would be, what would be the criteria for too much?
Would you like me to answer that?
Please.
So-
Would that be over the 20 or whatever?
Yes, so, once the class gets, um, established, he's hoping to take over instead of the, the community room, the McDonald's community room, he would like to move it on to an actual gym floor court. Um, at one time, he's had up to 50 students. So if we get more than 20, 20, 25 students, he would like, he can still do it at the smaller thing, but if we get more than, say, you know, 40 or 50, he would definitely want an extra, extra assistant. And he said that we can very, um, you know, work, work through the details and everything. He won't do anything without our, our authority to do that.
If, if we-
Could this have to be rewritten in the-
Yes.
It would have to be amended.
Amended?
That is correct.
So we'd come back and we'd do an amendment.
Okay.
And we'd have, I beg, I beg the council's pardon, thank you, Ms. Roberts.
Yeah.
And we would not only have to amend this, there'd be a new rate structure, because if you move out of this room, the hourly cost for our recovery changes.
Yes.
So for the gym, it's roughly $14.20 an hour, which would be vastly different than the $2.72, it's the basis of this particular use. But that's the beauty of this. I think that provision was put in there to give notification of his aspirations long-term, so that we're aware that it won't catch us by surprise when he approaches us for that. But I think every party is aware that there would have to be a new agreement worked out at that time.
And again, Michael, which, Lisa, which room is this being?
Uh, right now, we're gonna start it out in the McDonald's community room.
McDonald's room?
Mm-hmm. Mole Drac Room.
Mole Drac Room, McDonald's room.
I have a question. Will this contract, um, will this, um, will this instructor be contracted annually? Is it, is, will he be able to renew? Or what if another company wanted to come in and do the same thing? Are we allowing it to just be a yearly contract? I guess that's my question.
So my hope is that he will just continue, you know, we'll, we'll have him sign a new contract each year.
Each year?
Yeah.
It has the effective term on the, on the-
Yeah.
December 31st.
Okay.
Questions, any other questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. January, roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Vice President Neal?
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards?
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Usek?
Aye.
Councilman Pettit?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hardaway?
Aye.
President Bell?
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor, motion carries, Mr. Pettit.
Thank you.
You have the floor still.
The other item, Mr. President, uh, that requires approval is the open gym programs and associated recreation fees, uh, that need to be approved. I'm going to defer to Michael, because I did not mark my agenda from the committee meeting. Michael, can you-
Do you need a copy, here?
Give us a synopsis, I've got it, I just have to look and see where it's at.
Mr. Griffin?
Mr. President, Chairman, Chairperson Pettit, members of the council, you need to see this because, again, it involves fees that aren't necessarily contemplated in the rate ordinance that we did find that seems to be in place. We also believe that there's a, a perception that there were other rates that were enforced that we can't find an ordinance that supports it. I think my epitaph is going to read, where's the ordinance for that? Because I ask that all the time. But by you doing this, you actually approved two programs. This larger would be ratifying the program that has been operating for our adults for some time. But I did get, uh, some informal encouragement from the council in an informal way, and this will formalize that, that we could charge for open gym as well. We would delineate a difference between, uh, resident and non-resident, and that should be in your packages there. And you're approving those fees and our times for having this, and it will reintroduce, which has been suspended for some time, uh, the Tuesday, Thursday timeframe for young people to participate. We've actually not had that for a while because of incidences. We're talking about, they must be at least 14 years of age, up to 18 years of age, then 18 becomes the adult. We wanna reintroduce it to see if we can, uh, move forward with less incidence. We think that the fees will help with that a little bit, there was no fee in the prior iterations of this. And also, our hope is, is that we can review this at the end of this period, by the end of the year, if not sooner, because we already had a discussion, as the council may be aware, at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center Committee about, and Parks Committee, about, uh, the process for security going forward. We think we're gonna take a different approach to that, to make it more constant. That will involve a change, that will require an ordinance change in the wage and salary ordinance that we'll bring to you at a future date. Uh, but we need to do a little bit more research on the strength of that meeting that we had, but one step at a time. So we hope that the council will favor this, this will reintroduce youth, uh, open gym, which we don't have now. Uh, it will have a fee charge, and our hope is that, that this experiment will work. And it is only for, in the con, concept of young people, I believe are only allowing Maryville residents, is that correct?
Correct.
So you'll notice that there's no fee delineation, because we wanna limit it to, for that particular cohort, 14 to 8, uh, 418, uh, to be residential young people. I thank the council.
Thank you, Michael. Mr. President, I make a, uh, motion to approve the open gym proposal.
A motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Vice President Neal for approval of the open gym proposal.
I have a question.
Sean?
Um, I, I see the times on here, and I, I do apologize, I was not here for our committee meeting. Um, would there be another set time, like an evening time for adults? Because-
For, for an adult?
Open gym?
Not right now, because we have so many rentals coming through, we have, um, unfortunately, we have Hyatt Aquanis, we have Epic coming in to use courts.
Crown Point.
Um, so-
Crown Point.
I'm try, yeah, Crown Point's gonna be coming in to use the courts. I'm hoping that maybe we can find some time, you know, maybe Wednesday evenings or something like that, where we can actually do some adult time.
Or even a Sunday?
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, we could do a Sunday.
They need, they like to play, I know adults like to play a ball.
Yeah.
And they need it in the evening time.
Yeah.
You know, in 11:30 to 2:15, they're all at work.
Yeah, yeah, we, we, yeah, we can, I mean, we can work that out, so.
A midnight shootout.
Yeah.
A midnight shootout.
Uh-huh. It's gotta be something.
Let's think of a different name.
Right. That sounds like what?
Any other questions or comments?
Volleyball.
This is fees, so Mr. January, roll call again, please.
Sure. Vice President Neal?
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards?
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Usek?
Aye.
Councilman Pettit?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hardaway?
Aye.
President Bell?
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor, motion carries, Mr. Pettit.
Uh, also, Mr. President, the committee meetings, committee recommended, um, Lisa obtained quotes, three quotes, which was she, she was required to do, uh, for the parking lot, um, seal coating and, and re-striping. Uh, the bid that the, uh, committee, uh, recommended is with Everline for $29,700. And this will come out of, Michael, the, um, capital fund, correct?
Yes.
The, the Dean and Barbara White Capital Fund.
If approved tonight.
So I make a motion that we retain or let Lisa enter into, uh, contract with Everline to seal coat and stripe the parking lot.
What were the other two bids? Oh, excuse me. I wanted to ask you. There were two other bids, too.
There were two, there were two other bids.
What were they? I'm sorry.
Uh, Site Services was $46,850, and was it B&amp;G, Lisa?
B&amp;G.
Was 73,000 even?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
73,000.
Do the parking lot?
Yes.
Yes.
This was for striping?
Yes.
Seal coating and-
They're still coating and striping.
Ridiculous.
What was the total figure, Mr. Pettit?
For Everline was 29,700. They were the low of the three quotes.
They were the lowest bid. These are out of Indiana, Illinois, were they?
Um, they're actually out of Indiana, yes. Everline is based out of, um, actually out of Highland, Indiana, and then, um, obviously Site Services is out of Highland, Indiana, and then B&amp;G is out of Valparaiso.
Mm-hmm. We didn't have a bid by day?
Yes, we did. They quoted us 69,000.
Okay.
And, Mr. President, just to refresh the recollection of the counselors, we adopted a new purchasing ordinance that actually identifies purchasing thresholds. So if this contract was $15,000 or less, it would qualify for a department head to sign off on that as the purchasing agent on behalf of that department. Because it exceeds that, it requires the action by the purchasing agency, which is the council and its role as the park authority for this department. I'll do that a few times, to the point where you'll tell me to sit down, and I will honor that. But I want to remind everybody, because I don't think people are getting used to that, we're going to have a workshop tomorrow, for example, our new time for our staff meeting. We're gonna have, I hope, Mr. Riley do a presentation on some other matters, but we are gonna go over the purchasing ordinance, so that all of the department heads get a sense of what it says they can do, what they can't do. And we want to just make sure you understand that there'll be times that we'll undertake to purchase if our budget supports it and it meets all that criteria. This was one of them that we really want. It's going to be outside of our budget, so the Dean and Barbara White Community Center Committee had to approve it because of the source of the funding. But it does require this board to approve it, because it exceeds fifteen thousand dollars.
Sit down, Mr. Griffin.
That's okay, Rick, I'm not done yet.
I expected that.
Um, we also, Michael, Michael with his due diligence, oh, a motion, I'm sorry.
So we have motion on the floor by Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Uselak, to hire Everline to do the seal coating and striping at the community center, utilizing the appropriate fund at twenty-nine thousand seven hundred dollars. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Voice vote, okay, Joe?
Voice vote is fine.
All right. Mr. Pettit.
All right, I'm sorry, Mr. President. Continuing on, Michael always reports, gives us progress report on the finances of the, of the center. One of the things we voted on earlier was the park impact fee. Park impact fee balance as of June thirtieth this year was two-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand four sixty-two forty-one. Which is fairly robust, I think, which enables us to use those for some of these items. Couple other things that staff is going to be looking into. Steve had already talked during Rhonda's report about staffing. We're looking at, I had asked Mike Neal and Steve to get three quotes on the demolition of the Moes Building, so they're going to bring those back to the committee. The, also, asked Lisa to get prices on a lift for cleaning, some of the high I-beams that are in the center. They felt like they needed that type of equipment. We'll see what those costs come in at as a committee and make a recommendation to the council. And finally, there was a request, and Lisa, I'm going to have to turn to you. We talked about closing the building on Saturday, September twenty-first, owing to outside building events. There's a lot going on that day, apparently.
Yes, so we actually have a Calumet Christian volleyball tournament, which would take up most of the east parking lot. And then we have an outdoor, I'm going to screw this up, I know, but we have an outdoor function that would take place in the south parking lot, and then we still have events on the north parking lot. So it's going to be a madhouse in there, and we're just afraid that people trying to come in to work the fitness center or do the, because the walking track is going to be used for spectators to watch the Calumet Christian volleyball tournament. And we're just afraid that the spectators, or the clients that want to come in and use the fitness, they're not going to have any place to park.
Okay.
So we'd like to be able to close the center down that day. Just, it will also help with being able to control the situations on the different sides of the parking lot.
Okay, and we, committee recommended that, Mr. President, so I'll make a motion for the council's discussion and consideration to close the Dean and Barbara White Community Center on Saturday, September twenty-first, due to conflicting additional events.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Uselak, to close the center on Saturday, the twenty-first, because of the events.
Well, I have a question, too.
Mrs. Uselak.
Comment.
Did we not talk about the window cleaning? I think something was brought up about the window cleaning at the...
Took the words right out of my mouth.
I thought you were going to do that on the weekend.
What? Clean the windows?
We, we did talk about that.
We did talk about that, Marty.
Yeah, we, we decided to wait until after we got the gym floor resurfaced because of all the dust issues. So we have, we have waited to do that in, like, say, late October.
Oh, okay. So we're going to do something in October?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Lisa.
And I did provide Barb with the, the new flooring business right by Maryville Little League ICC.
I have a meeting with him on Wednesday.
All right, good. Give Maryville business, hopefully, some work.
Yep.
And see what their prices are.
I have a comment. And I know...
Counselor Sheen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Are we, I know, I know the community center is booked for all these outside entities, and all I keep hearing is how our residents can't do this, our residents won't be able to do that. When are we going to restructure the community center in some way, shape, form, or fashion moving forward, that our residents get to actually use our community center? I mean, I know we needed the outside entities to bring in some revenue, but our residents are, they're getting the short end of the stick. So I don't know what we can do as a team, town, but we need to make it so at least our residents know that this is still a place for them.
And I totally agree with you on that, and I will do my best to make it happen.
Thank you.
Mr. January, did we vote on the motion to close on the twenty-first? I don't think we did.
No.
Oh. Any other discussion on that motion? Hearing, and all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Mr. Pettit.
That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you. Moving on tonight to special committees, abandoned and blighted properties. Counselor Sheen.
I have nothing to report at this time, thank you, Mr. President. I don't know if Mr. Griffin has any updates.
How about your next committee?
Semi-Quintessential Committee, no, nothing to report as well.
Thank you. Special Town Projects, Vice President Neal.
Thank you, President Bella. We are preparing for our trunk or tree that's scheduled October twenty-fourth. We are getting people to contact us to let us know they want to participate in it. The information should be up on our website, so anybody who's interested, just reach out to us. We're looking to have a big event in there, and following that, we are looking for, looking to prepare for our Christmas tree lighting ceremony. So we're busy in the events department.
Very good, thank you. Department and Commission Reports, Lake County Solid Waste Management District, Mrs. Neal.
Um, thank you, President Bella. My next meeting with the Lake County Solid Waste is in September the third, Thursday, at six-thirty P.M. And if anybody's interested in a household hazardous waste collection, it is scheduled on September the twenty-first. Actually, there's one September seventh, too, I'm sorry. I have to look that date up. But the September twenty-first one is in, at Lowell High School, Lowell Middle School in the north parking lot. And at that particular one on the twenty-first, probably why it's stuck in my head, there also will be taking in shredding. So if people have papers that they want to shred, they will take up to, I think it's like four buckets of papers to shred per household.
Great.
And where do you take that, the shredding?
That particular one is at Lowell Middle School.
That's the only one?
In the north parking lot. Yeah, they don't do the shredding in every one, but for September, that's the only one for September.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Are we talking about four buckets, or four bags?
Bags, buckets. I can't remember what it said.
Buckets and bags.
Actually, on the picture, they had buckets and bags.
Okay.
And that's, that's all.
Moving on to the Northern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, known as NERCY, Ms. Hardaway.
No report. The meeting is September eighteenth.
Stormwater Management Resources, Mr. Lake.
Thank you. Really quick, once again, I want to thank the Little Calumet River Basin Development Commission and for supporting us. On July seventeenth, I attended their regularly scheduled board meeting and requested fifty percent of the construction costs for our project at Connecticut Street and Sixty-Ninth Avenue. At their last board meeting, they had approved over two-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand dollars worth of cost share for us towards the project, so I just want to thank them for that. We had our pre-bid meeting at the MCD office for our Southmore Park Drainage Project last week. We had six contractors attend, so I think it's going to be pretty competitive, and so we anticipate good numbers at our September third meeting, which we will be opening up bids for that project. I'm reviewing the draft set of engineering plans from Robinson Engineering for our Independence Hill Third Edition. This will be a pretty costly project. We'll get the engineer's estimates, then I'm going to seek some grants and other cost share for that project as well. And I was contacted by IDM. They came out in August twentieth, and they shot a promotional video on the IDM Clean Community Program. They want to showcase Maryville's implementation of environmental BMPs. So that will be available on their webpage, and that will be presented as well at their annual meeting. And that's all I have.
When that's available, can we get a copy of it, so that CHAS can get that posted also to the town website?
Yeah, absolutely. Get the CHAS.
Very good.
I have a question.
Mrs. Uselak.
Thank you. Matt, regarding the call I had from Creekwood Crossings, you went out and you took pictures on Clark Road, I believe, they wanted to know if that was in their area for cutting down and cleaning the weeds. Did you ever find out?
It was a request that you had for a tree, I believe, and I sent it to Steve because I wasn't aware of where it was located at. I think it was in the transitional phase between the old and the new.
Yeah.
And we looked over there, I don't know if we saw anything that was actually, because they didn't give any specifics.
No, there was, there was nothing that stood out over there, so I don't know.
Well, the call came from Creekwood Crossings, and the gentleman said that he thought that Clark Road was in our fourth ward, and there was supposed to be a lot of weeds in the tree to be cut down.
Yeah, I don't, I, I saw a picture of a tree, and I was under the assumption that the tree was causing a hazard to the roadway, and it wasn't. So that's the only thing I saw, was a picture of the tree.
Okay, did you ever call the gentleman back?
Ah, no.
We had called him and left the message. So we were waiting, we had called him because we wanted more information from him.
Okay.
Because the parkways have no weeds out there. So there's no weeds in the parkway area. If it's on private property, it's a different story. And then the trees, there was this one that I sent that may have a little bit of clearance issues, but I'm not sure if that's the tree they referred to, but that's the only one I found going down Clark Road, to see if there's any kind of impediment of traffic flow with branches.
Well, his wife is the president of the homeowners' club there, and he wanted all the information that he could get, and that's why I was curious if...
Yeah, we requested more details, because it was pretty vague.
Okay, good.
We tried.
Okay.
Thank you. Moving on to the Fire Territory Board, Mrs. Neal and Ms. Hardaway.
No report. No report.
Department Reports, Lisa Roberts, Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Mr. President. I pretty much took care of everything that I wanted to talk about. I just would like to thank Steve King and his crew for helping us out with the trails and parks, and I hope that, working together, we can get everything taken care of.
We'll be just fine.
Thank you. Police Chief Nusis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to start off with our statistics for July. We had approximately twenty-three hundred calls for service, over four hundred traffic stops. In those four hundred traffic stops, you had about a hundred and ninety-eight tickets with seventy-three arrests. This leads me into the next thing that I wanted to discuss. My command staff and I meet weekly, and we discuss the operations of our police department. We figure out whether or not what we have is working, does it need to be tuned, or sometimes it's just a flat-out failure. During this meeting, this last meeting that we talked about, we come to the conclusion that our overall calls for service have dropped. Our violent crime has dropped significantly. I could proudly say that we have, this was starting last year, we had the lowest homicide rate in over a decade last year, with only two homicides. This year, we're about, we're about halfway through the third quarter, and we're at one. So plans that we do have in place are working. This isn't by luck, this is a collective, from administrative directives, to the Patrol Division being out, being visible, being readily available to answer calls, to investigate suspicious incidents. Goes next to the Detective Bureau, who follows up on what the Patrol Division collects, where they investigate, and they're able to charge offenders. We've had a very high success rate, and we've had a high success rate with the charges, criminal charges and convictions. Another, another addition to this has been the task force that we have. We have officers on federal and local task forces, and they have been very active in preventing some of these violent crimes. So it's been an overall success with how it's been operating. And one of the things that we did look at were, was traffic. Now that things have kind of calmed down, this has been, over the last quarter, we have noticed has been a reduction in calls for service. What we're going to start focusing on is to try and create a balance where we can actually enforce traffic without sacrificing the suppression of the violent crime that we have been doing. This is something that we're going to work on, it's probably going to be a work in progress, but you will start seeing more officers with assignments for problem areas for speeding and whatnot. So that is something that we're pretty proud to say, and pretty proud to announce, and I'm very proud of all my officers, all the men and women in our police department. Lastly, I want to announce that the Women's Self-Defense Class was a success. It was full, and we are looking at trying to host one more in December. As soon as we get the information that we need, we'll be putting it out, and we'll be announcing it to the public. Thank you.
How many participated, Chief?
We were at the max, I believe it was fifty. Whatever the max was, I can't remember, I believe it was fifty was the max.
Oh, wow, okay. Very good, thank you. Planning and Building Department, Ms. Sheen.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The Planning and Building Department will be sending out our rental registration renewal forms. We ask that if you are a owner or a agent, and you have not registered, please register your apartment or home in our rental registration program. Failure to renew by October first will result in a five-hundred-dollar fine. So we want to make sure that everyone knows that it is time to send those in. We'll be sending them out in the mail Friday, and so if you live in a home that you don't believe is registered, please contact us, and we will send a letter out to the owner or the agent, and get that home or apartment registered. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
I have a question. Will that form be available online?
Uh, we can make it available online, yes. We can do that.
Good idea. Street Department, Mr. King.
I think I've hopefully covered everything through the whole meeting, so...
Town Manager, Mr. Griffin.
Mr. President, members of the council, Mr. Clerk Treasurer, you have before you my report for the month. This report is actually the compiled report to help us comply with Maryville Municipal Code Section two-dash-three-nine-point-one, which provides for monthly reports. It's there for you, and me offering anything about that is sort of gratuitous, if not superfluous, so please enjoy it at your leisure, I'll answer any question. I would, Mr. President, with your leave, like to take an opportunity to get something into the record.
Sure.
We discovered, Mr. Lake, as Stormwater Executive Director, contacted me about a concern he has. In the ordinance that this council adopted, that adopted new rates for the stormwater management function of our town, there was an, what's called in the term of our Scrivener's Error, is a typo. As advertised, the rate was correct, it's a nine-dollar rate that you adopted, but it was really advertised at ten, was actually adopted and recommended to you by the Board of Directors of the Stormwater Management Department. It came to you with that, and for some reason, it eludes us, in the ordinance itself, instead of reading ten, it reads nine. I am reliably advised after consultation with Mr. Lake and with our town attorney, that this is called a Scrivener's Error, and all I need to do is put on the record that we intend to just do a manual correction of this, unless there's an objection, that reflects the intention, and also because there's a public hearing at the level of the Stormwater Management Board, and that public hearing had to be advertised, the public notice for that had the correct rate as well. So it truly is just a human error, but we wanted on the record that to be reported to the council, and we'll just take the steps necessary to make it lawful. Mr. Lake needs that, because he needs to get this filed with the Lake County Auditor, who does our billing for that particular fee. But I didn't know another place on our agenda to bring this up, short of going up under public comment. This is part of my report, it came to my desk as town manager, and I just wanted to report that, and if there's no objection, we're just reporting that, so under general consent, you're accepting that that is the correct rate, ten dollars, and I believe it is for the residential, is it not, instead of nine? I believe it's described as residential, single-family duplex and three-unit, including excess acreage.
Any objection from the council to correct the typo? Basically what we're doing.
No.
Mr. Svetnov?
I'm good with it. I talked, I talked sensibly with the Stormwater Attorney, Jim Meyer, and him and I both came to the conclusion that this was a constituted Scrivener's Error, it should be corrected, it was correctly advertised, everything else, it was just a simple mistake on the typing of the ordinance, so...
Without objection, Mr. Griffin.
Thank you, Mr. President. And then unless there's questions, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a comment. I appreciate your comments on the food and beverage tax, Michael, and contacting Northwest Indiana Business Management Magazine and local newspapers and the radio. Very good.
Mr. President, if I may, that is actually an initiative of your media officer, Mr. Riley. It's part of this report, because all the departments contribute to it. But I appreciate the compliment, as I'm sure he does, too. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. And I wanted to ask the Clerk Treasurer, what is the amount of money we have right now, that you have probably received a report on?
I have to tell you that, can give me a minute? But in regards to the, while I'm looking that up, in regards to the food and beverage tax, working with Mr. Griffith, he provided a list from the Health Department of Lake County, and we're able to basically identify a few businesses that were not, that were paying the food and beverage tax, that are actually not in Maryville. So, but I think we're clearing things out, and we, I believe, hopefully by the end of the year, we'll have an accurate number of people that are actually subject to the food and beverage tax, because it is taking time. And then we'll be able to actually start estimating what we can anticipate in terms of this revenue, so that we can do the planning with it. So I look forward to that, but it is a process. But the dollar amount that we got for the food and beverage tax, I got to go to that The way I hate these reports.
I think Mr. Pettit said a figure at...
It's three, three hundred and something thousand dollars, or...
I thought that the Clerk Treasurer reported in the month of May, we received seventy-one thousand dollars. I think that's...
That's one month.
That's one month.
That's one month, yeah.
That's not the total.
That's not the total, though. So the total is possibly around three hundred something?
Yeah, it is three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents.
Well, we were talking about using some of that for the community center, or the parks at our last meeting?
Well, it's, the legislation designates economic development, tourism, and park and recreation, so it's the discretion of the council.
We need a spending plan, we need a spending plan.
We need a spending plan and a capital plan.
Can't just spend it.
Right, we can't just, yeah, go off and, and that's not a full collection, right, Mr. Clerk Treasurer?
We have not had a full collection yet.
Nineteen percent participation of the restaurants.
Well, when we say nineteen percent, originally we had a list that we thought included more organizations than it actually did, because some places, as you know, are, have Maryville addresses but are not actually in the town of Maryville. So once we purge those, the number is coming down, and we'll have a higher percentage. But at the end of the day, we're not nearly as compliant, because when I look at it, I can see some businesses that should be collecting the tax and are not. And we provided that list, we're gonna do a mailing to some of those businesses, and then with the work that CHAS is doing, more people become aware of it. And over time, once the state really starts imposing these penalties, we know that people are actually gonna be compliant with, because with the, any tax, when they collect it, that is something that they're just performing a fiduciary duty for. They're just collecting the sales tax and then they're remitting it to the state. Or in this case, when they don't collect that 1% tax, when the state imposes the penalty on them, that's the money that's gonna come out of their pocket.
Well...
And once that happens, once...
And if they haven't paid for a quarter, Mr. Clerk Treasurer, it's gonna be the whole quarter that they're collecting for, plus the penalty.
That's right.
Which is really gonna wake businesses up to comply or being imposed a penalty on.
Correct, right.
So if they have a Maryville address, there will be people that won't have to pay that?
Right.
If they're located in Hobart.
Hobart.
There's a lot of Hobart businesses.
If they got a Maryville address, they should...
Well, they go through the Maryville...
Goes by zip codes, they own them.
I wish.
As I said before, I've got three zip codes in Warth Six.
Wish that was the case.
Right.
I'm just thinking, like, you got the...
When you call your state rep and suggest that, oh, that goes.
Allegedly.
Allegedly.
Love to get that Chick-fil-A.
Yes.
Anyway, thank you, Mr. January. I think this is very good for the council to keep up with, so when we do start spending, we know what we have and where we're at. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Anything else to add, Mr. January?
Uh, no, just on the, talking about funds overall, between the town, Stormwater, Court, and redevelopment funds, the town at the end of July 31st had 36,155,249.18.
Okay. Moving on tonight to general orders, we have no first reading ordinances, but we do have a variety of second reading ordinances. The first one is 24-28, it's an ordinance of the town of Maryville, providing that the zoning ordinance town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, be amended by changing the established C3 Highway Commercial Zoning District classification to a Planned Unit Development Zoning District. Ms. Schein, what are we doing here, why?
Yes, Mr. President, that is the property that is located right across the street, Pirates Plaza. They are going from a C3 to a P E, Planned Unit Development. They are building a building now, and later on they will come back and build a strip center in the front of the building they're building now.
Looks like things are moving along there rather quickly.
Yeah, they are.
Very much so.
They had a debt line.
Mm-hmm. Motion to approve ordinance 24-28, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Uselek for approval on second reading. Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, is there any public comment on this ordinance 24-28? Seeing none, back to the council. Hearing nothing else, Mr. January, roll call, please.
Vice President Neal?
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards?
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Uselek?
Aye.
Councilman Pettit?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hardaway?
Yes.
President Bella?
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor, motion carries. Moving on to ordinance 24-29, it was discussed earlier tonight during the public comment section, it is the Casino Gaming Fund creation. The amount is $45,000. Is there a motion to approve, council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mrs. Neal and Counselor Shee?
Yes.
For ordinance 24-29 on second reading. Any questions from the council? We already did the public comment hearing, Mr. January, roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Vice President Neal?
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards?
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Uselek?
Aye.
Councilman Pettit?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hardaway?
Yes.
President Bella?
Aye.
All in favor?
All in favor, motion carries, seven zero. Moving on tonight to ordinance 24-30, this was also discussed earlier tonight, it creates a Maryville Fire Territory Overtime Fund of $150,000 and also insurance for $115,000. This is ordinance 24-30, is there a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Uselek, second by Counselor Shee, for approval of 24-30. Was it Mrs. Neal?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I sit corrected by Mrs. Neal. You guys have fun doing that, don't you?
Yes, we do.
There's no public comment tonight, any other comments from the council?
No.
Hearing none, Mr. January, roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Vice President Neal?
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards?
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Uselek?
Aye.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway?
Yes.
President Bella?
Aye.
All in favor?
All in favor, motion carries. Moving on to ordinance 24-31, it's an ordinance of the town of Maryville, amending ordinance 24-25. This is a new date for distribution for the funds for Andrean High School Project.
Motion to approve, Mr. President?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Neal, for approval of 24-31 on second and final Open for discussion. Hearing none, open for public comment, is there any public comment on this ordinance? Again, we're just updating this to change the, the date of the distribution, is that right, Mr. Pettit?
Yes, February, it was recommended by Michael and by Tom Pittman that we do a February 1st disbursement every year. Once the allocation areas get the draw, Mr. January collects it from the county, we'll make the distribution February 1st.
Yeah, this has a deja vu, we already did it, really. Anything else from the council?
No.
Is there any public comment? Seeing none, Mr. January, roll call.
Vice President Neal?
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards?
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Uselek?
Aye.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway?
Yes.
President Bella?
Aye.
All in favor?
All in favor, motion carries. Thank you all. Moving on to ordinance 24-34, our last ordinance tonight, it's an ordinance appropriating additional monies in excess of the annual budget for the Police Department Continuing Education Fund. As discussed earlier tonight, the amount is $60,000 going into continuing education and overtime.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Neal, enthusiastic, second by Mrs. Uselek. Sorry, Leona.
Note that for the record.
Note that for the record, please. We did public comment earlier tonight on this, and there was none, is there any comment from the council? Hearing none, Mr. January, roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Vice President Neal?
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards?
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Uselek?
Aye.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway?
Yes.
President Bella?
Aye.
All in favor?
All in favor, then motion carries. Moving on tonight to resolutions, we have one on the agenda, it's Resolution 24-22, it's a resolution of the Town Council, Town of Maryville, approving the issuance of bonds of the Town of Maryville Redevelopment Commission and related matters. This is the amount of $6 million, I think Mr. Pettit made reference to it earlier, and I do know that the Redevelopment Commission did their paperwork and approval this evening at their meeting.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve Resolution 24-22.
I will second that motion.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, chair will recognize Ms. Chandler Felton.
Oh, I didn't even hear her.
I didn't either.
Did you?
She's a little quiet.
I heard her.
Questions or comments on the resolution?
Mr. President, the only comment I'd make is President of the RDC, and Mr. Schwentz is in the audience at the workshop last week, I brought to the council's attention that there has been an inquiry from a local lending institution that has their corporate headquarters here. I've put Bob in touch with their president to try and negotiate the best interest rate and give a local institution that business, so Bob's gonna, hopefully if we have a favorable vote here in a minute, Bob will start that tomorrow morning.
That's good news. We do have a percentage not to exceed, is that right, of 5% I think it was, Bob? Questions or comments from the council? Hearing done. The resolution, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? 24-22, resolution. Moving on tonight to large gathering actions from the BZA, Ms. Schein.
Yes, Mr. President, we have one large gathering action this evening, and it is from Adam J. Espinoza, who is the owner and applicant for this large gathering, and it's the purpose of this is the Independence Day Celebration, located at 260 East 84th Drive. This event will take place September the 7th, which is a Saturday, from 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. This event is a celebration of Mexico's 214 years of independence. This fest will be held on Saturday, September 7, 24, from 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Tickets will be sold for said event, and approximately 100 to 175 people are expected to attend. The area where the festivities will be held will be fenced off to maintain crowd control, and also it will be easier for the officers to monitor. Maryville Police will provide the security. Once attendees who are 21 years of age have provided identification, they will receive a wristband, which will allow them to purchase alcoholic beverages. No broken wristbands will be accepted when purchasing drinks. This site will have two portable water stations, two male and three female toilets will be maintained by Republic Sanitation. There will be one dumpster and 10 trash containers on site, which will be maintained by Republic disposal. Telephone services will be available to the public. There are 65 parking spaces on site, but overflow parking spaces will be directed to Mavis Tire at 8303 Broadway. Maryville, Mavis Tire has provided a letter of approval for access to their parking lot. Musical entertainment will be provided by Lou Rivas. There will be no overnight stays and no animals as a part of this event. The applicant does have a valid liquor license, and the Department of Homeland Security has provided the amusement and entertainment permit.
Thank you, Sheila.
Motion to approve, Mr. President?
Second.
First one, Mr. Pettit, second one, Mrs. Neal. I believe we do this every year, and we have for the last several years, for this restaurant. Chief, has there ever been a problem during this event at this restaurant?
No, we've never had a problem, and Adam's always been really good about outlining what he plans to do, how he plans to do it, so he's always been a team player with us.
That's great, thank you. Any other discussion from the council? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Sheila.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Moving on to, there's no old business before, it's new business, is there any new business? Public comment, please state your name and address for the record. We allow three minutes, come to the podium here so that we can record your comments. Yes, ma'am. Just form a queue there if you don't mind, guys. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
My name is Levon Bowens. I live behind the Radisson Theater, where that fence is totally raggedy.
The fence, you said?
Yes.
Okay.
And I have worked with Sheila, she has helped me all that she could, I've been in her office, she's called, she's talked to him, they have promised her four times that they were gonna fix that fence. I have pictures on my phone, me and my sister the other day, two women, we had to pick it up and we had to clip it together with a hanger so it don't keep falling.
Hmm.
I could stand in my bedroom and look at 30, it's just horrible. And she's worked with me, and she's worked with them, and they, they didn't do anything. She did all she could do.
That is, I know exactly where you're at, ma'am, on 78.
Yeah, 611, 78th Lane.
Yep, we will call, I will call the owners of the Radisson, we will talk to them.
But how am I know if they're gonna do it or not?
We'll make sure they do it.
We'll make sure, I'll make sure they do it.
Okay.
Yep, be prouded. Mr. Svetnov, you also have a contact there, I believe, right?
Certainly.
Do we take care of that?
Yep.
Well, Mr. President, they do have a purchase order out for it. I talked to the lady the other day, she said that there is a purchase order out for it, and so they have went over there, and so hopefully with Councilman Pettit and others calling, it'll be taken care of.
But I just wanted to know that you did, you...
I did, we talked to the lady several times, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
We'll give them a call, ma'am, thank you. Yes, sir.
Just kind of sec, 7661 Morton, not only do I resonate at the town of Maryville, I'm a firefighter in the town of Sherreville. I am the union president for Sherreville Firefighters Local 4279. I just want to appreciate the time you gave our brothers here at the beginning of the meeting. I remember 25 years ago when I was working in Illinois, South Holland Local 4109, when we took the steps to go forward and charter our own union. And this is an excellent night, these are excellent men, and I would just like to challenge the territory board members, as well as the council members, to look forward to working with them and getting them a collective bargaining agreement that not only protects them, their families, but also does good for the town of Sherreville, or town of Maryville, sorry. Not only do these gentlemen here deserve that respect, their family members deserve that respect, but being a part of this union and the things that can be brought forward to the town of Maryville with that, it's gonna be a great improvement for the services and the people of this community. So I urge you to take the time, listen to them, work with them, and have a positive labor management agreement and relationship with them so that they can provide the best services possible to this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Kneel, Solus, 1439 West 73rd Place. You know, having a child murdered is one of the worst things you could go through in life. The reason I know my 22-year-old daughter was murdered in this town. Today, I sit on the board of Parents Who Murdered Children, and I think it's really sad that at 61st and Broadway, I had a homeless guy every year, let me back up a little, in memory of my daughter, every year I take parents to a, to a national conference. In 2022, I was able to take 10 parents to St. Louis, which I paid for everything. 2023, I was able to take 11 parents to Atlanta, which again, I paid for everything from donation and money out of my pocket. Just last month, I was able to take 18 parents to Vegas. Again, I paid for, from donation and money out of my pocket. And I think it's really sad that at 61st and Broadway, I had a homeless man that gave me the last dollar he had in his pocket. I had a prostitute that gave me $50. I had a drug dealer in this town that gave me $200. For the last three years, I became before the town board, asked for a donation, I haven't received a dime. I think that's really sad. So next year, next year I'll be taking 10 parents to North Carolina, and in January I'll be sending a package to you guys, ask for $25, maybe I can get $25 from you guys. I know you're saying, who is, who the hell is this guy? What the hell are you talking about? I have an email that I would like to share with you guys from last year.
Thank you, sir.
Brian Massarch, 201 East 68th Place. I've lived at 68th Place for, in Connecticut Street on the corner for 25 years. Mr. Pettit, you're absolutely correct when you said 68th Place is the main drag to the high school. Couldn't have said it better, it is a drag strip. I can tell you every day what time it is. In the morning, it's 7:30 when I hear the cars racing, and it's about 2:45 when I hear the cars racing in the afternoon. And if we can't get speed bumps, I would love to have stop signs on 68th Place in Connecticut and have all the traffic just stop. There are tons of kids who walk on Connecticut Street because there's no sidewalks, and there are now new families in the area on my block where kids are small, four, five, six, they're running into the street, playing, riding their bikes, because that's what kids do. And we need to do something, because I'm afraid that somebody's gonna get hurt. I've watched it for 25 years, we've complained about it, I know the Martinis' over on 67th would love to have the speed bumps, and we've been complaining, so stop signs. If we can't do speed bumps, let's do stop signs. Councilwoman Shee, I want to thank you for bringing up about the community center, it is absolutely disgusting that everybody's using it except the residents. Mr. Griffin, open gym should not be an experiment, okay? It should be just something that happens. Excellence comes through diligence and hard work. It doesn't happen by luck or happenstance, and if we can't provide someone who is gonna make that successful, then we need to find and hire the person who will, because we need that open gym for residents, because that's, when you're keeping kids busy doing things like playing hoops, or playing ball, or doing something, they're doing something positive, and they're not ripping our neighborhoods up, they're not ripping Turkey Creek up because they're doing something positive. For you to say that that's an experiment is absolutely unacceptable. Make it work, period.
Announcements for tonight, next town council meeting is Tuesday, September 10th at 6:30. entertain a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.